20 Village Clerk Roll Call, please.
T. Graham. Here. Hardy. Here. Hennessy. Here. Aaron.
Here.
Saddle. Here. Wood.
Present.
Mayor Vanderbilt.
Present. Present. Uh, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing for the fiscal year of 2020, 2021, for the budget. I want to remind those, uh, watching that there have been multiple budget review sessions, uh, that we have had, uh, even before, uh, the COVID-19 and then during we've had budget review sessions. And so, uh, with that, I spoke to our village manager, Tom Mick, and he has let me know that there's no comments for our public hearing for this fiscal year for the 2020, 2021 budget. Would you like to have any other remarks, village manager Mick?
Uh, Mayor, I just checked my email one more time, just to make sure that there were no comments that came in. Um, I think I'll reserve my, my comments as we go through the agenda item after the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, sir. With that, we are now on to agenda item number one, an ordinance adopting the budget for all corporate purposes of the Village of Park Forest, Cook and Will County, Illinois, in lieu of the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of July 2020 and ending on the 30th day of June 2021. Village Manager Mick?
All right, uh, before I hand it over to our Director of Finance, Deputy Village Manager Mark Pries, uh, just some, uh, areas of introduction. Uh, I think the board will be able to, uh, share this sentiment with the public as, um, as the comments allow, but we've gone through what I would say is, uh, or was a very, uh, arduous, uh, review process. Uh, we started out with, um, our, our, our process of developing the budget coming out of, uh, the property tax levy last December. Uh, then we, uh, had a financial update in February. After that, uh, we had, uh, provided details to department heads as far as guidelines to begin building their budgets. Um, and the staff, I think, did a really good job of building their budgets, um, unbeknownst to what was coming with COVID-19. Uh, so those were submitted. We reviewed those in the latter part of February, uh, and then, um, or into, into March, uh, with the expectation that we wanted to get something in front of the board, uh, for its review processes in the month of May. Uh, that's kind of a standard, uh, approach for the Village of Park Forest, uh, is the department heads do things internally, try to put together the proposed budget, and then the month of May becomes the review process. Um, and that's what took place. Um, we had the introduction, um, on May 4th, uh, which included, uh, you know, just some elements of how to read the budget, uh, where we're at in the process at that point in time. Um, from there, uh, the following week, uh, when things had really set in with COVID-19, um, we had substantial, um, budget review sessions on May 11th, May 13th, May 14th. Um, I think by my looking at the clock, uh, almost all of those meetings went, uh, three and a half, four, four and a half hours, uh, depending on the evening. I think in total, the review, um, process of the board sitting down with management staff and reviewing each department totaled somewhere around 13 hours of budget review. Um, and, uh, I think coming out of that, there were a lot of, uh, tough decisions that had to be made, and we're going to talk about some of those with the, uh, the presentation, uh, especially, uh, as regards to, um, some unknowns, some uncertainties, uh, pertaining to COVID-19 and what that's doing to our community. Beyond that, there's another agenda item on, on this evening that corresponds with those budget reviews based on feedback from the board. Um, the final thing that I would share with our public, uh, the board is aware of this, but for the public's sake, uh, all of our budget review processes, all of our sessions were televised. Um, it feels like it was such a long time ago, back when we were using GoToMeeting.com instead of using, um, Zoom. Uh, we facilitated those meetings. We showed them live on our cable access. We also streamed live on the village website. And, um, those videos are still available for the public if they want to review them and listen to what was discussed with the police department, the fire department, admin, uh, you name it. Um, there was a lot of work that went into it. Um, we announced all of those meetings and sessions with, uh, public notices on the village website. Uh, and then this last week, um, kind of as a culmination of all the, the heavy lifting that was done for what we're going to talk about tonight, we put out another release to the public reminding them of the public hearing, where they could find additional details on, uh, watching the budget review sessions, et cetera. Uh, and so now we're, where we're at tonight, uh, moving into what we call the public adoption process. Uh, it's where I think, um, substantial changes have been made to the budget. Uh, we're going to go through some of those items with narrative and exhibits. And we'd ask the board to understand that, um, unlike many years, uh, the budget review process this year resulted in substantial changes, uh, to our budget. Uh, there's a lot of documentation and schedules that had to be shifted based on, uh, discussions related to cost of living adjustments, uh, frozen, uh, capital projects and staffing vacancies. And so what we're providing tonight is, uh, some examples and exhibits of what salary schedules will look like, what frozen projects will look like, uh, but we would ask that the, the, the board, uh, be patient that it's going to take us a while to get through all of the finalized schedules and how they all connect to each other across what is really probably about a 520-page document. Um, all of that being set as, uh, kind of an introduction to where we've got to this point in time, uh, I'll turn it over to our Deputy Village Manager and Finance Director, Mark Pries. Mark?
Thank you, Manager Mick. Good evening, Board. Um, I think the manager did an excellent job of going over the, the calendar and the timeline of the budget process. Um, so what I'm going to kind of get into more is, uh, the meat of what's, uh, in the budget, uh, with the numbers, um, and spend some time talking about those things that, um, the changes that came about, um, in our budget review sessions, um, uh, last month. Um, as the, as the board's aware of, the village produces a budget document, um, that is, that, that receives the, uh, Government Finance Officers Association, uh, distinguished, distinguished budget presentation award. And the fiscal year 2021 budget is prepared in that same format. Um, and if we do get the award, which I, which I certainly will, um, it would be the 27th consecutive year for this, uh, for this award. Um, there's, there's several things that, that a budget does. It's not just about numbers. It's not just about what we expect to bring in and what we expect to spend. Um, a budget should outline the goals and objectives of the community. Um, it provides for the revenues, for the programs for the community, and it provides for controlling the expenditures. One of the things that I, I, I like to reiterate for the board as well as for the public's, um, purposes is that a budget is the authority to spend money. It's not a mandate to spend. Um, I think good conserving budgeting practices are, that you conservatively estimate what you think you're going to bring in revenue-wise. Um, but then you also plan for what you think are going to be the maximum expenditures that you can do in a practical sense in the coming year. Um, one of the things that we discussed during our budget review sessions were, were that the village typically does not spend to it, to the full budget amount. Um, we are, we are consistently coming in under budget. Um, and that's because you can't always control for what happens during the year. Um, I think 2020 is a perfect example of that. Um, so you, you, a, a budget needs to be very fluid in, in its management and its operation. Um, looking at the, some of the financial challenges that we've had, um, uh, with the fiscal year 2020, uh, 2020, 2021 budget, um, some of them are the same. Um, we have to look at what our, uh, our core versus our non-core services are. Um, the board's aware of that, uh, especially for the new members on the board that back in 2018, uh, the village closed the, uh, health department. Um, we, we, we continue to look at what our, uh, core and non-core, um, services are and, and to assess those. Um, we need to look at our major expenditure categories, um, salaries being one, and, and that was one of the discussions that we had in our review session, and I'll, and I'll cover that more with the, uh, uh, cost of living adjustment at July 1. But we also look at our, our, our risk insurance, our health insurance, our pension costs, and our Southcom, uh, joint dispatch costs. Um, one of the things that we, that we talk about in the budget document that doesn't really seem numbers-driven is our, our leadership role within the region. Um, there are many organizations, um, and associations that the Village of Park Forest, that we're, that we're not just participants in, but we are leaders in, in, uh, these organizations. Um, and there are several, uh, suburb, uh, mayors and managers, Southcom, uh, South Suburban Land Bank, National League of Cities, um, those are just to name a few. Um, last year, the village received, uh, a, an upgrade to its star community rating. It went from a three-star to a four-star rating. Um, so those are some of the things that it, it, as I said, it's not so much numbers-driven, but these are the, uh, a, a budget is the management tool that helps us get, um, involved in these issues and, and become successful with these issues. Moving on, um, the village, um, has, has, has aging infrastructure. Parks works with. Um, I want to spend a little bit of time going over the, the items, uh, that were changed during the budget review process, um, that the manager mentioned, that, um, I know in, in my very short time here with the village, um, it's the first time that, um, this level of change was, was, was put into the budget document. And from, just from looking back in the history, that, um, this is something pretty substantial, uh, that, that typically does not happen with the, um, uh, with the budget. Because of the amount of time put into the budget, um, typically you don't see this, this much change coming into a budget document kind of at the 11th hour. Um, but, um, these, uh, these are, the, 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 these items are all, um, uh, controls, uh, are, are, are costs that, that, that can be controlled. Um, and in light of the financial circumstances going on, I think these are all very prudent, uh, moves that the, that the board has made. Um, the first item is the capital outlays, um, in the general fund. And there is a schedule attached to the memo, um, here that, that lists all of the capital outlays for the general fund. Um, and there's just over $1.7 million of capital outlays, um, across the various village departments, um, that, that are, at this point in time, they are deferred. All department heads are aware of this. Um, they know that, um, we're not going to be spending money on these items. These items still stay in the budget because I, I also have to think, well, what if, if in six months into the fiscal year, if the financial situation changes and we, and we are, we return to some level of normalcy, and we say, you know what, we want to be able to accomplish some of these items, we don't have to go through the administrative processing of, of, of putting these items back into the budget. Um, I think the other good thing, by leaving these numbers in the budget, we avoid that, like, kind of a peak and valley, um, look to our budget where, you know, why was fiscal year 2021 such a hole, um, or, or like so low compared to these other years? And, you know, in five or six years, there, there, there could be a lot of different people in the village that they're not really sure of, why did this, you know, why was there such a, such a drastic cut or decrease to the budget? So I think keeping these items in the budget is good, but they are going to be noted. Um, this, the, the schedule that you see, um, it's a two-page schedule that lists all of the capital outlays, um, and it's footnoted throughout the, um, the summary schedules for the various departments, saying that there's amounts that are, that are included in here, but they're not going to be spent until such a time as the village, um, gets back to some form of financial stability. Um, and as I, as I said, all, all the departments are aware of this. Um, it's not just going to be an individual department decision to move forward on this. There will be a discussion between the board and staff, uh, that are we ready to move forward? Um, and then it, it, it'll, it'll be, um, a decision made, um, as I said, between board and staff, um, on that. Um, the other, um, item on here, um, are, is the position vacancies. Um, and then, and there, there is another schedule attached here that shows the position vacancies in the general fund. Um, we see vacancies in the finance department, public works, rec, uh, recreation parks and community health, fire, and police. That totals up, uh, just shy of $500,000, $497,829, that these positions will, will be held open until, again, very much like the capital outlays, that the village has, is back to some form of financial stability, that we feel confident moving forward that we can invest in these dollars. Specifically with staff, because when you hire staff, you want to make sure you can continue to afford them going forward. Um, I, I, I would, I'm sure every manager and every person would agree that you don't want to hire somebody, um, and then you have to turn around in a month, two months, six months and let that person go because you, you don't have the financial capacity to maintain that expenditure. Um, again, these, these, uh, position vacancies are going to be footnoted in the summaries of the departments where, um, uh, they're, they're going to be held open. Um, so between the position vacancies, um, and the capital outlays are going to be, um, postponed, we, we have in excess of 2.2 million dollars of expenditures that we are not going to be, um, doing right away, and the, there is the potential that they will not be done at all in fiscal year 2021. Um, there's also two salary schedules just for the board, um, so, 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 so they could see, um, how the COLA was presented. Um, we have, uh, the police department salary detail, um, as well as economic development. And you could see in the columns of those salary, um, details, where the cost of living adjustment, um, comes in, you could see the, uh, the police command staff from the, from the police chief through the commanders, where that 2.75% increase comes in. The following page, um, shows the, uh, support staff, the non-union support staff in the police department, and you could see that there is a 0% decrease because their six, their June 30, 2020 base salary is the same as their, their, their gross salary for the, for the, for the coming year. Um, if they are, um, eligible for a step increase, that's the only difference that you see there. Some of these employees are still moving up the, um, pay matrix. So if that number changes from their, uh, June 30, 2020 base to the gross for next year, the reason for that is that, is that they're moving up in their, in their pay scale, that they're eligible for a merit increase next March. So like I said, there are, so you, so you could see the difference there in the way this is presented, um, in terms of the salary schedules with those, uh, with those various departments and the way the 2.75% is included in, um, in police, not for economic development. We didn't include all of the salary schedules. This was more of just so the board can see, um, the, the salary detail documents and how it gets presented in the budget. So, again, the, the, um, between the vacant positions and the, uh, capital outlay items, uh, we have over $2.2 million of, of, um, expenditures, uh, that will not be made. Um, additionally, we have, um, two transfers, um, that, out of the general fund that do not need to be made in the, in the coming fiscal year. One is the $270,000 that, that goes out of the general fund to the Aqua Center. Um, and since we know that the Aqua Center will not have a 2020 season, um, the need to make that transfer to the Aqua Center, um, is not there, so that will not be made. And then the second transfer that won't happen is the $70,000 transfer from the general fund to the housing authority. Um, and that's due to the fact that there is a vacant position in the housing authority that's going to, um, uh, be left, uh, vacant. Um, and that $70,000 transfer specifically supported that position that's vacant. Um, so that's an additional $340,000. So we have in excess of $2.5 million of expenditures that are, are deferred and possibly won't happen, um, in fiscal year 21. And I say possibly won't happen because if, if the financial uncertainty remains for the 12 months through fiscal year 2021, these, these expenditures won't happen. Um, but again, you know, I'm trying to be hopeful that, you know, at some point in time in the fiscal year, um, we, we will turn the corner on this and we can say, you know what, maybe we, we need to look at this and say, do we, do we make some of these capital outlay purchases? Do we hire some of this staff? Um, and that's a discussion hopefully we'll, we'll have, um, in the fall. Um, I mean, maybe I'm being too optimistic, but it would be great if we could have that discussion in the fall, um, about trying to put, trying to look at what are, what would be, um, the best items to actually spend the money on, um, that, that, uh, out of those items that were deferred. Um, given that presentation, and that, and that's a lot, um, the other two schedules that I, that I, that I really wanted to point out, um, the general fund revenue schedule, um, and the general fund expenditure schedule. Um, and what I really wanted to point out to the board was, you see the general fund revenue schedule there? It's got four columns of numbers. The last column shows that the combined revenues totals $27,651,154. That's for fiscal year 2021. You see there's a footnote there that says there are revenues of $386,950 that are not expected to be received in fiscal year 2021 due to COVID-19. Um, specifically, those are income taxes, um, personal property replacement taxes, and, um, sales taxes. So those three items with the, with the, with the revised lower estimates, um, we expect of just, just shy of $387,000, um, less to be collected. Now, however, um, this, that estimate was made before the state approved its budget. Um, and I believe the manager informed the board that the state did not reduce the LGDF, um, allocation to the local governments like it has the last three years. So that's, that's a, that's a piece of good news for us, that, so that we may possibly realize that, 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 that reduction of $386,950 may not be that large. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed and hoping that that's, um, that, that comes to fruition. Um, and then looking at the general fund expenditure, um, for, uh, next year, again, you see the four columns of numbers. The fiscal year 2021 proposed budget shows, uh, a total of $29,376,382. Again, you see that footnote there that says there's $2,557,391, um, and it shows where, where it comes from. It shows the personnel amount, the capital outlay amount, maintenance amount, transfer amount, um, that are, that are all amounts that, that are deferred, um, due to COVID-19. Um, so I just wanted to point out, like I said, these, these footnotes to the board. Um, and the, you're going to see these footnotes through a lot of the summary schedules in the revised budget document that, that points this out, again, because these numbers are still in the budget, but from the management perspective, um, it's, it's, I, I, I think it's better from a consistency standpoint to keep them in the budget and staff will manage this. And, and as I said, it's, it's been made perfectly clear to every department what is not going to be done, um, uh, in terms of capital outlays and, and vacant positions in fiscal year 2021. Um, so, uh, as I said, it's, it's, it's been made very clear to staff. So I, uh, from a management standpoint, um, it should be a, a rather simple process moving forward. Um, so I know that's kind of a lot to take in, especially via, um, a phone call on that. So, um, that's, that's all that I have to present. Um, Manager Mick, I don't know if there's anything else that you, that you want to run, uh, circle around to, um, on this? Um, if not, I'd be happy to answer, answer any questions that the board has.
Mark, I do have a few items that I would add, uh, you know, based on what you had shared. We've shared this with the public, or with the board, uh, and the management staff is aware of it. Um, but for the public's sake, uh, Mark has gone through a lot of numbers. Um, and budgets are supposed to be a lot of numbers. Um, you know, when you look at the amount of money that comes in with the general fund and then all of our funds, um, the village is probably one of the more complex municipal operations in the south suburbs. But our budget is not necessarily just a ream of numbers. We've shared this in the past. Uh, we take pride in the fact that it's a communications device, uh, and I think some of our newer trustees, uh, really appreciate that. It, it gives you the story of, uh, what we're trying to do, where we've come from, where we're going. COVID-19 is a, is a glowing example. Uh, when we look two years out, three years out, four years out, and we look at some of our trends, we'll be able to look back and say, yeah, we remember what happened in, uh, 2021 with COVID-19. Uh, hopeful that, uh, between now and then, there's not a COVID-20 or a 21 or any other catastrophes that further impact our financial picture. But for the public who may be watching from home, uh, our budget's available on the website. Uh, once upon a time, it was a hard copy document that you could get at the library, but now it's, it's, it's available, uh, on the website. It's in a PDF form. It's searchable. If you're looking for a particular, um, salary, if you're looking for a particular term or a particular item, uh, it will navigate you exactly to that part of the budget. And so I think that's a real powerful resource for our residents. The other thing that Mark had talked about is, uh, the reductions in revenues, um, based on IML projections. Uh, the IML has sent out projections on how they think communities will be adversely impacted in, uh, in particular, sales tax and, uh, income tax. Uh, I did share details with the board last week about, um, for the first time since 2017, the state's budget will not have a, uh, net reduction of the LGDF, 5%, I think. Um, I don't know if that figure is about an extra 20 grand that would, would go towards our bottom line. I think that's a positive. Uh, and we believe from a forecasting standpoint that there's probably some things going on in, uh, people's purchasing habits, uh, buying stuff online as opposed to going to bricks and mortar stores, um, that probably may actually work to Park Forest's financial advantage when it's all said and done. Um, the way our community is laid out and situated, um, a lot of sales tax dollars go to, uh, other places in the region, uh, that have more of a retail base. And so, you know, in, in the business arena, that's called leakage of dollars. And instead of those dollars going to some of those communities that have, uh, a much more robust, um, uh, commercial district, those dollars are going to come back to Park Forest, and we think that's actually going to bode well for us. Um, we have a degree of confidence on that, that, uh, the 15% impact noted by IML, we think we're gonna, we're gonna end up better than that. Um, but what we're going to do is take a wait-and-see approach across the first and second quarters of the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, the board's aware that our budget is a, is an ongoing annual process where after we put the budget, uh, to rest, uh, later this put the budget to rest later this month, there will be a fall financial update typically in October or November, where we'll have a little bit of an idea of how trends are looking in property taxes, and sales taxes, and income taxes. And then definitely by the time we get to the, the spring financial update, which typically takes place sometime in February, we ought to have a clear six-month picture on how those revenue trends are looking, so that we may be able to give the board some additional options to consider on those items that are frozen in the current proposed budget. All of that being said, I really appreciate the staff's time to get us to where we're at. I really appreciate all the work that our finance staff has put in. You know, it's been a financial, or a budget preparation process unlike any that I've seen in 20 years with the village, because of the meteor that hit our organization, or hit the, you know, hit society or our country with COVID-19. And so a lot of changes have gotten done. And they've actually taken place with the stay-at-home order in place. And so it really cut down on the ability for staff to actually be meeting as a group. Everything had to really kind of unfold via conference calls and emails, et cetera. And then I would recognize the mayor and the board for putting the time in. You guys know the meetings that we were in. And you start out with a fresh perspective at 6:00 PM, and by the time 9:30, 10 o'clock rolls around, batteries are starting to run down. But I think you'll have a solid peace of mind in being able to look the public in the eye that our board has put in the homework on the budget that we've arrived at and that you'll eventually adopt. Without, with those comments, augmenting what Director Preece had shared, we open it up to board questions that you may have or comments.
Any comments by the board? All right, I just have one.
Trustee Woods?
Thank you, Trustee Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. I just simply want to say to, for the sake of the board, as well, the staff, and to the public, that I hope it recognizes that we, as a board, were very cognizant of the situation regarding COVID virus, and how it affects the budget, and how we really, our desire was to try to save our residents as much money for the village as possible moving forward, and apply those funds as efficiently as we possibly can. So I just wanted to acknowledge the board and the staff in that regard, as we look out for our citizens moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Woods. Any other comments from the board?
I just have a few questions. With this new budget plan, how much would the average homeowner see a rise in property taxes?
Mark, I think what I would say is that there's really, there's no impact on property taxes because the tax levy was approved and applied with last year's, or last December's property tax levy increase. The budget itself is built on what that projections are as far as property taxes, and keeps in mind what we expect to be some of our revenue streams. I'm not sure that there's a correlation between this budget and what the impact would be on resident tax bills. Mark?
Thank you, Manager Mick. Yes, and I would agree with that. I mean, it's, this, this budget is based off of the tax levy approved in December that, that definitely, our Cook County residents have already started making their payments on. I know, I believe. Will County may have made a deferral for 30 days on their, on their tax payments. I know there's discussion back and forth, and I never did hear if they finalized that. But the impacts of that are, have already been included in the tax levy. And the tax levy that would, that will happen at the end of this calendar year is yet to be determined. So, yeah, not much more I could add on what the manager has already said.
Thank you. The other question is, do you see the village having a balanced budget where we're going to actually take in as much revenue as we have expenditure for the next round, for the 2020, 2021 budget?
As, as the way it's presented right now, Mayor, it's, between our revenues and our unassigned fund balance, we will, and even if we were to spend all of the capital outlays that are in the budget, as well as fill those position vacancies, we would still maintain a 3.1, it's a 3.6-month reserve. That, that, that reserve increased a little bit because as we redid the salary numbers to remove the COLA, that reserve went up. But now if we, without, if we went the entire year without spending that money, we actually would have the expectation of bringing in more current revenues over current expenditures. But we would also be moving up to about a 4.5-month reserve in the general fund. And I think if we would be moving up to that level, knowing what the capital outlays bring, as well as staffing brings to the services to the village, I would, I would recommend, I would ask that the board consider making some capital outlays and looking at filling positions, because that's what will help the services and increase services for our residents. So I know it might sound, sound good to say that we brought in more money than what we spent. But I always look at, at the dividend on the tax, to the taxpayers on their investment of property taxes paid is the services that they get back. So I, I would, I would look at it as, you know, we're, we're within our three-to-four month reserve. And if we're at a four-and-a-half month reserve, I would, I would think we would be wise to look at our capital outlays and our vacant positions and determine what, what's the best investment for the village.
Thank you, Finance Director Preece. Trustee Harding?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the staff, as well as, you know, the previous boards that have served before me, because they have put us in the position that we're in right now, which is, you know, we have the three-and-a-half months reserve, we're not having to furlough any other staff, you know, we still have money for our capital projects. You know, all these things are really, you know, wonderful to see at a time like this. And so I just want to thank everyone who's put that time in, before myself even, just to make sure we are in such a good position, because a lot of municipalities right now are not in such a fortunate position as we are. So thank you all so very much.
Do you have any other comments, questions from the board? Thank you, Trustee Hennessy.
Yes, Mark, I just have one quick question. As you're monitoring our property taxes as they come in, and we're several months into our last installment, how are we doing?
Trustee Hennessy, we're still doing better than, in terms of the amount of dollars collected this year than we were last year. The month of May actually was considerably stronger in the current year. And when you look at, we're, the amount of money we collected in May for the 2019 levy versus last May that we collected in the 2018 levy, it was considerably higher. And that's, and that's for Cook County. We haven't started to receive anything from Will County. We typically don't receive Will County collections until June. But no, we are doing, we are doing better than where we were last year. And so it's, as I said in our meetings, I'm cautiously optimistic. I don't want to jinx us. I don't want to put any false expectation or false confidence out there. But the collections are coming in very strongly.
Thank you. One quick comment. Thank you, Manager Mick, put it very well with the, and used a good word, arduous. So I know that falls on you, and it falls on the board, and it falls on the rest of the staff, so thank you. My personal goal is to see us, when we come to the end of this year, that we don't have to raise taxes on our residents. So as we move forward, I'll be asking for updates on different things, so we're, see where we're at, so we don't have to raise taxes. And thank you again. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Hennessy. Do you have any other comments from the board? Seeing none. Thank you again to staff for all the work you've done to help prepare the new balanced, or the new budget for us this year, and looking for how, the new plan and how we help our residents as well. The second item is an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances of the Village of Park Forest of the water and sewer rates. Village Manager Mick?
Mayor and Board, this item comes out of Administration and Finance, also Public Works. And really, it's a direct result of the recent budget review processes. As part of the discussion with Public Works, there was reference to, want to take a look at the slate of rate increases for water and sewer rates. The board recalled that we had fiscal policies that were put in place as part of being the guidelines for developing the budget. And there was a reference to 5% increases in both the water fund rates, or the water rates and the sewer rates. And so we had explained to the board how that worked, the mechanics of it. There was a slate of increases that were put in place in the spring of 2018. Historically, the village has tried to have incremental increases in the water and sewer rates each year, being mindful that taking the incremental approach, year in and year out, is better than depleting the fund and then having to, you know, have a spike, an increase of, you know, 15, 20%. And so as one of the exhibits tonight, there's the ordinances that were adopted in the spring of 2018, and it set rate increases through 2022. The board being mindful of what's going on with COVID-19 and impacts to our residents, made reference to the idea of wanting to consider a 0% or basically a rate freeze for water and sewer rates for July 1 of the, for the upcoming July 1 rate increase that would have been 5%. So we've looked at that. And what we, we want the board to be aware of, and I think this is what Director Preece is going to work through, is when you put together your forecasting models for your water and sewer fund, you look at what does that give you over the long haul as far as financial capacity to facilitate operations? Every year, you've got staffing costs, you've got distribution costs, chemicals, et cetera, that you have to fund. But then we also try to factor in that Park Forest, unlike many places, has as many water main breaks as any community. I think there's several factors about that, that we've talked about historically, either being the corrosive soils around Park Forest, or just the similar age of all of our infrastructure being put in place in one time and starting to come due. The forecasting of those 5% increases kept in mind the ability of being able to do periodic water main replacement projects, sewer repairs as may be needed. We typically use those funds to help offset what our costs are for low-interest loans or other projects that we may proceed to get, or we may actually pursue to get the best financial value for the, for the village. As we look at a 0% increase or no increase for July 1 coming up, Mark has provided some forecasting on what both the water and the sewer fund look like, with a 5% increase in both of those funds, and then without that. We're mindful of the board's dialogue with us from a staff standpoint in the budget review process, that there's clearly a reality of what's going on in our community that warrants the consideration that the board wants to move towards. But we also want to make sure that there's a financial understanding, that there are some things that come with that from a long-range planning standpoint. All of that being said, as the introduction, I'll turn it over to Director Preece to walk through that, and then we'll entertain questions from the board. Mark?
Thank you, Manager Mick. Included in the agenda packet is the agenda packet that went to the board back in 2018. And that, that's given there, just kind of show the, the background that went into studying, you know, what impacts the water and sewer fund, as well as the analysis that went into making the suggestion for the, for the water and sewer rates that were adopted a couple years ago. I think the manager made an excellent point that there's certain things here to look at that may not be something that comes to mind very quickly. I think it's very, it's very understandable to say that, yeah, if we're going to make a rate freeze, that it's going to help the users of the system with their, with their monthly bills, because it, it won't be an increase in the rate. I think it's a very easy thing to understand. One of the things that I just wanted to point out, and I did that in the cover memo of this, is that when we look at not raising our rates, is, one of the things I just want to point out, I'm not concerned about this right now, but just, if we, if we get into a pattern of freezing rates, that we need to be careful with our, with our bond rating. One of the things that Moody's looks at when they, when they, when they rate our credit, and they give us a bond rating, is our ability to meet future obligations. And what do we have in place to be able to meet those future obligations? And when we set something up in a five-year rate study, but then if we start peeling back on that multiple times, a rating agency like Moody's will, will say, well, what do, you know, we're not understanding what your financial management here is. I know when we had our budget review meetings, we talked about the debt of the village, and the vast majority of the debt is held in the water and the sewer fund. And we also know that there's a large amount of capital that needs to happen with our infrastructure out of the water and sewer funds. And when we look at our rates, that's where our ability to, whether it's either outright pay for a project, or come up with the money that we, we make our annual installments on debt to pay for these projects. So it's just one of the things I, I wanted to point out to the board. I did, you know, I want to reiterate what I said in my memo. I'm not, I'm not objecting to what the board's doing, but as, as the treasurer of the village, I have to bring it to the board's attention, that this is something that we need to be mindful of, of our credit rating, because if we, it's, it's like an individual's credit rating. If you're, if you get, if your credit gets downgraded, and you do want to go out to borrow money, you're going to pay more money in interest, because your rating is not as favorable as what it could be. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and make sure that that's clearly understood, is that if we, if we continue to do items like this, we do run into the potential of that we're going to incur more costs to borrow money. So I just want, I just want that to be clearly understood by the board. That being said, the attached proposed ordinance, basically, it, it takes the water and sewer rates and keeps them constant at July 1, 2020. It uses the, the rates that were in place from July 1 of 2020. It uses the the rates that were in place from July, uh, 1 of, uh, 2019. Um, and then the last items there that I included for the board, um, there are four schedules that show the impact of, um, raising the rates on at July 1st of 2020 by 5% and keeping them, um, the same. And these are the same amounts that that we discussed in our budget review sessions. Um, so it's it comes as like for, uh, the, uh, water fund. If we were to, uh, increase the rates at July 1, we see by fiscal year 2030, the fund has a cash reserve of about $6.2 million. But by not, um, taking that rate increase at July 1 and keeping it consistent at 1642, we see that by, again, by the end of fiscal year 2030, there is over a $4.2 million decrease in in cash. So, it it's it's a it's a very powerful, um, analysis down there by just by by what one, um, uh, freeze of the water rates, what it does to that fund. And we even see now, I mean, even if we were to have 5% increases going forward, um, in fiscal year 26, 27, it's looking like the 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 water fund could actually run out of cash. Um, obviously, that's that that's six years from now. Um, we we can do plenty of work to avoid that, um, in the near future. But I just wanted to, again, to point that out to the board. Um, and it also, then we look at this, uh, at the sewer fund, we look at what the impact is if we do make the increase from $3 to $3.15 in the sewer fund. Um, unfortunately, even if we were to stay on a consistent 5% increase, we look at and see in about 10 years' time, the sewer fund actually is 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 running out of cash. Um, so this is, I think, the impact of there were, I think, seven or eight years, um, without rate increases in the sewer fund. Um, and that that's the impact of of having rates frozen for so long is that even with 10 years of 5% rate increases annually, the fund's cash is still appearing to, uh, fall into the negative by, uh, fiscal year 29, 30. Um, but then when you do look at the, um, the schedule that shows that we freeze the water rates at on July 1st at $3, um, we've we've gone from what would have been about a $48,000 deficit in our cash balance to what becomes a $780,000 deficit in our cash balance in the sewer fund. So, as as your finance director and treasurer, I just want I just want to reiterate to the board that I that I do believe that we that 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 this is something that we 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 can't consistently go back to and say, well, we're going to keep freezing rates because if we're going to improve the infrastructure in the village, we we need these rate increases to be able to afford the improvements that we need to do to our infrastructure. So, that being said, those those, um, those are the presentations that were included there. And like I said, the, um, the ordinances just basically adjust the rates, um, for the next three fiscal years. It free it freezes it at July 1 of 2020, but then it puts the 5% on at July 1 of 2021 and then 5% again at July 1 of 2022. And that's as far as the original five-year plan went. Um, and that's all that, uh, uh, was updated on the plan. I didn't carry it out any further. Um, I just extended it to the original end date, um, of the original five-year study. Um, I have nothing else to present with this item. If there are any questions by the board, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Trustee Hennessy?
Thank you, Trustee Hennessy.
Um, yes, I want to refer to our, um, our reserve and our bond, um, our bond status. When I brought this up at an earlier meeting, Mark, I believe if I'm not wrong that you said if there was a problem based on all of our good history and being stable, that and then we could explain it if we really ran into a deficit. Now, I I'm thinking a pandemic would be a good explanation. Was I, did I misunderstand?
Well, I I know when we had that conversation, Trustee Hennessy, it was if we if we have a deficit, you like a year where we where we dip into our reserves, um, and we we spend at a deficit, it's it's, that's okay because that's that's what your reserves are there for from 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 time to time to be able to dip into them. Um, or if you're staying within your policies, like if you're staying within your three to four month reserve, um, which is a policy that we have across all of our funds, um, that if we if we dip into it, but if we're staying within that three to four month reserve, we're we're operating where we financially expect ourselves to operate at. However, if we have a plan in place, and I think this is what we also discussed at a at the prior meeting, is that how, you know, what's our plan moving forward to get out of that situation? Um, so that's why I say we have a plan here of, uh, fixed annual rate increases that now we're starting to peel back from. So, we're not following the 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 plan that that was put in place by the board two years ago. So, that's where I said that, you know, if if we have a plan coming out, we, the rating agencies will 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 look at that and they tend to have a favorable approval of that. But by by freezing the rate, we're not following our own plan. Um, so we're we're taking steps that were already in place to improve the financial picture of the water and sewer funds and we're freezing them. So, that's what I was trying to express at that point in time is that if we have a plan to improve our financial picture and follow it, the rating agencies will like it. But by doing something like this, and and if we do this often, the rating agencies won't like this. If we set a plan but we don't follow it, they're going to say that we're not financially managing our our, um, our funds, um, well enough and that our, as a as a credit risk, we're we're more risky than others that do follow their plans.
We're in no danger at this time of going into our reserve or i- as you see it in the next coming year.
I'm sorry, Trustee Hennessy, I didn't, I I could you could you repeat the question, please?
Sure, I'm sorry. But you don't see us, from what I'm listening to, you don't see us dipping into our reserve, actually adding to our reserve over the next year or so?
Um, within the, uh, within both fund, um, I believe, and just bear with me for one second, please, as I scroll through of, uh, the information. Um, by freezing rates, it looks, you know, from the, from the water fund side, we actually will be, um, dipping into our cash. Um, but it's also because we're 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 starting a rather sizable project where we probably won't get out of the loan proceeds within this fiscal year. Um, if you look at the spreadsheet that that keeps the, um, the water rate at the $16.42, you could see that at June 30 of 2020, we we have ending cash of about $3.5 million. We freeze the rates and then our ending cash goes down to about 1.4 million, then to 2.5 million, then it dips again to about 1.9 million. Um, and then you start seeing that cash go lower and lower. So, the reason why I say I if we if we do it this one time, I think we should be fine because our rate structure ends in 22, 23. So, then we have to look at a new rate structure that quite possibly, it it may need to be more than 5% increase at that point in time, but we'll but we'll but we'll also have the benefit of knowing what actually happened in each of the years for fiscal year 20, 21, and 22. So, knowing that, you know, when we say that these these numbers are proposed for fiscal years 21 and 22, we just don't know exactly yet what's going to happen. We're reasonably certain what's going to happen, but we'll have a clearer picture when we go to put in place our next five-year rate plan for it. And we, you know, we can we can we can be more, uh, sure of what the numbers are when in each of those funds. So, I guess to make a a long answer even longer, Trustee Hennessy, um, for ho- holding rates the same for one year, I I I don't see rating agencies having an issue with that. Yes, you're correct. For for COVID-19, I think the I I don't see a rating agency saying, well, you know, that was that wasn't a very smart thing to do. Um, but as I said in the memo, I would be, I I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't let the board know that, you know, if we put plans in place, we should be following the plan, um, rather than each year freezing a rate, um, and not following what what the plan that we put in place because, a- and as you see here, you know, in this 10-year projection of the water and sewer rates, you can see what happened. And you could see the massive impact from just one 5% increase, what it does to each of the funds. Um, and 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 the impact of the cash on those funds. So, that's why I say if we we if we go back to this well too many times, um, it we we run the chance of running into not only the financial implications to each of the water and sewer funds, but then we also run the risk of our credit being downgraded.
I'm satisfied that we're doing this 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 year. Um, I don't know if that's the pattern. I don't think any of the trustees think it is. Um, and I and what what I'm hearing from you is you don't think it will impact impact us too greatly in the coming year. Is that correct?
That's correct, Trustee Hennessy.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Trustee Hennessy. Do we have other comments by the board? All right, seeing none. Moving on to the third item is an intergovernmental agreement for asset sharing within the mutual A box agreement system for 27. Village Manager Mick?
Uh, Mayor and Board, this item comes out of the Fire Department. Uh, in many respects, it's a housekeeping matter. Um, it's an intergovernmental agreement that, uh, relates to the sharing of assets or equipment amongst the participating entities.
Rules meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Trustee Hardy. Do we have a second?
Trustee Settle, second.
Thank you, Trustee Settles. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 8:06 PM. All right, next up, we have a special regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. It's being held remotely. Public notice posted Village Hall, 350 Victory Drive, Park Forest, Illinois. Uh, we are at a teleconference call. Village Clerk, roll call, please. And it is 8:07. I just realized I was on.
Done talking because I can't?
Yeah, I just realized I was muted. I was on mute the whole time. Uh, we are at a special regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. It is being held remotely. Public notice was posted Village Hall, 350 Victory Drive, Park Forest, Illinois. Uh, this is a conference call and it is 8:07 PM. Village Clerk, roll call, please.
Trustee Graham?
Here.
Hardy?
Here.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Karen?
Here.
Settle?
Here.
Woods?
Present.
Mayor Vanderbilt?
Present. Uh, next up, we have reports of village officers. "We must stay vigilant for the life of of George Floyd and others we have lost to police brutality. We must stand together to fight the same virus that has infected our country for over 400 years, a virus of racial injustice. We must remember what Martin Luther Martin Luther King Jr. wrote while in Birmingham jail, 'That an injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an escapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. Protest the injustice. Don't bring harm, chaos, and destruction by looting your communities. Park Forest is a unique community in that we come from different backgrounds, cultures, races, and religions. Yet we as a community embrace that difference and honor the traditions. We have worked together hand in hand to fight to save our schools by shopping local, training our youth, and providing care for our seniors. Now is the time that we stand together as one. We cannot go and let police brutality go unchecked. However, I am proud of the Park Forest Police Department and every one of our officers and the job they have done along with the transparency that every one of our officers has a body camera worn on them while in the field. I also want to let the public know that the Park Forest American Legion in Chicago Heights was not set on fire. Uh, and but it was a van that was targeted in the used car lot just south of there. I want to say thank you and great job of the Chicago Heights Police Officers on securing the scene that night and throughout the night and of the Chicago Heights Fire Department on extinguishing the fire before it grew. Lastly, we, the Village Board, agree that the Village of Park Forest should have a daily curfew of 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM to remain until lifted. Though we were limited in the damage that occurred in Park Forest last night, these measures are being taken for the safety of our community. Please be safe and stay home. Thank you. And that is my comments. Village Manager Mick?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I've got some comments, uh, in follow-up to your, uh, statement regarding, um, uh, the tragic incidents involved with, uh, with George Floyd. Uh, I want to let the public know that we've had several inquiries come into the police department. We've seen some posts out on social media, uh, about the, uh, potential to, uh, gather, uh, as a community and engage in peaceful protest, uh, and not get bogged down into some of the stuff that's going on uh, with anarchists, um, opportunists, and really people trying to further a different agenda or cause. Uh, for folks who may have been in contact, uh, the village is is, uh, willing to be an active participant in those events. Um, I I think, quite frankly, we need to get through some of the stuff that's going on currently, um, in a very charged environment. And Park Forest with a history of, uh, of a Commission on Human Relations, uh, the work that our community has done over the years with it with race equity and leadership. Uh, I expect there'll be a time where we can come together as a community, uh, further debrief what's happened, uh, stand in, uh, unity across, uh, all segments of our community, um, and do it in a way that I think is is unique to Park Forest compared to, uh, a lot of other places around us. So, uh, as we have more details on that from the public, uh, we'll share it with everybody else so that, uh, there may be as many people participating as possible. Uh, moving on with my comments, I've just got two other items I want to hit. Um, one is an update to the public related to COVID-19, uh, and it is as follows. In accordance with the Restory Illinois Plan, our region of the state moved into Stage 3 last Friday. Uh, what is the impact for park foresters? Uh, it means that small group gatherings of no more than 10 people can start taking place while still meeting social distancing requirements. Also, Village Hall reopened to serve the public in person beginning at noon today, June 1st. Given the unrest occurring in the Chicagoland area as a result of the tragic incident involving Mr. Floyd in Minneapolis last Monday, Village Hall closed at 5:00 PM this evening. Village Hall will reopen tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM and is expected to be open 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM the rest of the week. Uh, residents, uh, who may come to Village Hall should take note, uh, that entry will only be allowed by visitors who are wearing a face mask for protection uh, and that understand that there'll be an expectation for social distancing guidelines, uh, while conducting business at Village Hall. Uh, residents who are unmasked will be asked to use other means to transact village business, uh, be it through the drop box, outside of Village Hall, the village's website, or via telephone call. Uh, as a continuing reminder related to COVID-19, uh, the village has announced a number of programming cancellations and or alterations for the month of June and July. These cancellations include, uh, the police department's Summer PAC program, the Park Forest Aqua Centers 2020 SWIP, uh, youth, uh, summer youth camps coordinated by Recreation, Parks, and Community Health, uh, the village's Fourth of July festivities, and, uh, several community relations favorites including resident, uh, the Resident Appreciation Barbecue, House Music Fest, and the Sunset Soiree. Uh, other village programs that will be substantially altered include Main Street Nights, uh, with more details to be forthcoming, and the Main Street Market, uh, Farmer's Market. Uh, the Main Street Market opens this coming Saturday, June 6th, from 7:00 AM to noon. Uh, the Main Street Market opens this coming Saturday, June 6th, from 7:00 AM to noon. It's located on Main Street in downtown Park Forest, just west of Dollar General. Uh, folks who may be, uh, patronizing the market need to realize that there are, uh, distinct set of guidelines that have been put forth by the State Department of Public Health, uh, which limits the number of people attending per household, expectations of social distancing, uh, being mindful that, uh, public safety is, uh, is of paramount significance. Um, residents are encouraged to continue following the Village website, social media, and water billing inserts for additional updates in the days or weeks ahead. If all goes well, um, and COVID-19 cases continue to decrease in Phase 3, we could, yeah, we could open up into Stages 4 and 5 later this summer and into the fall. Uh, however, this will only happen if residents continue to be diligent, uh, with handwashing and sanitation efforts. Uh, and the Village continues to wish everyone well, um, being safe, and wherever possible, when you're out and about in the public, please wear a mask to protect yourself, to protect others around you. Uh, the only other comment I have, uh, relates to, uh, a police, uh, several police incidents that happened overnight last week. Um, I believe it was Wednesday, uh, Tuesday evening into Wednesday, uh, a multitude of cars were illegally entered in Park Forest. Uh, these cases happened along Neola Street, Saw Trail, and Dogwood, among others. In several other cases, nothing of substance was taken from the car, uh, other than it was rummage throat. Uh, in several other cases, some cash or change was taken, and in one circumstance, the vehicle, a vehicle was actually stolen. Uh, that vehicle has since been recovered, uh, and appears to be in, in good shape. Uh, unfortunately, all of the vehicles involved in the cases were unlocked, uh, and made for crimes of opportunity. Uh, every year, there seems to be a few cases of teens going up and down streets looking for unlocked cars or unlocked garage doors. Uh, the Village, uh, the Police Department, um, and the Village itself would encourage residents and remind them, uh, to be diligent in locking your cars each night before you go to bed. Make sure that you lock, uh, your garage door, uh, and try to make, uh, that theft a little bit harder for the perpetrators. Typically, they're looking for, uh, crimes of easy opportunity. And if they walk down the street and they lift that car door handle and it's open, um, they're going to enter it and see what they might find. If the door is locked, they're just going to move on to the next vehicle. So please be diligent, uh, look after your belongings, and, and don't make yourself, uh, uh, an easy target for someone looking to get something out of your car. Unless there's any questions, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nick. Village Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, other than just hope everyone stays safe and, uh, and stays well, I have no formal report.
Thank you, Attorney Suckler. Next, Village Clerk?
No report.
Thank you, Clerk McGann. Next up, we have reports of Commission Liaisons and Committee Chairpersons.
Trustee Settle, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Trustee Settles.
Uh, the Veterans Commission will have their monthly meeting, uh, June 13th, which is next Saturday, via Zoom conference call at 10:00 AM. Also, of note, the Veterans Closet will be reopening on June 2nd, which is tomorrow. Um, that's the end of my, um, Commission Liaison Report. I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to extend my sorority to, um, all of the small and large businesses, particularly the small businesses that were looted, uh, and devastated during the recent protests in the Chicagoland area, in that I support peaceful protests for, uh, injustices and change. However, I condone looting and destruction affecting businesses, communities, and residents, which are already suffering financially from the COVID-19 pandemic. In contrast, it is very heartwarming to hear and see residents of affected communities take to the streets, standing together to help clean up the aftermath. It's taking pride and, and gives me hope and faith that we all will survive this, um, together. That is the end of my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Settles. Any other trustees' comments? Thank you, Trustee Henderson.
Um, I want you to know that, uh-
No Commission reports. However, I would like to make this statement, um, earlier today and even yesterday. I received phone calls from residents asking if I would make a statement, and so here it is. My heart, soul, and mind goes out to all who suffer in pain over this injustice, especially African-Americans, as well as those who peacefully protest for justice, including, including those law enforcement officers who courageously express their solidarity by taking a knee. Even in those simple gestures, it stops a riot. And while there is great disdain for acts such as looting, we have to remember that there is a great, much more pain associated with the Black experience in this country. There is a problem when there is more discourse about the reaction to pain rather than the pain itself. Yes, there is a George Floyd, but there was also an Ahmaud Arbery, a Sandra Bland, who I met a year prior to her death, the Central Park 5, the Scottsboro 9, Emmett Till, and even the burning of the Black Wall Street in Tulsa, Oklahoma, 99 years ago. As we see the various strains of the COVID virus in the midst of a global pandemic, we also see the strain of systemic and endemic racism in this country and around the world. My only hope is that we can find a vaccine force to systemic racism. And now we seek to get back to normalcy. But we must first realize that for Blacks in this country, normalcy means being broke and broken. Having recently had my one-year anniversary as a trustee, I seek to be ever more vigilant in this role and to be ever more committed to this community and those who put me here in this office. I count on all those in elected office as well as those in positions of authority locally and regionally to recommit to making better the communities we represent with honor, integrity, and due diligence. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Woods. Do we have any other comments from the board?
Trustee Graham?
Thank you, Trustee Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I want to say the Environment Commission will meet this Thursday, uh, June 4th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Um, please visit the Environment Commission Facebook page as well as the Park Forest Sustainability page. Um, you can get information on things like the community gardens, uh, free mulch, and seeds, and the Main Street Market announcement. Um, the Youth Commission met last Wednesday via Zoom, and they started to hash out what they will do about Youth Day this year, and if they can still provide our youth with school supplies, which I hope that we can still do. Um, next, I want to say thank you to the Finance Department, staff, village manager, and my fellow board members for spending over 13 hours going over the proposed budget. Um, I believe that we did some good for our residents in the light of the, uh, pandemic. And while I do understand the concern for our future rates, I also agree that we have a duty to our residents to do as much as we can to help them through this pandemic. And I believe that, um, that that's a step forward, I mean, step in that direction to help out our residents, because we, we're not sure what's going to happen. Um... My condolences go out to all of the families who have been affected by, um, the riots and, um, everything that's going down right now in our country. Um, it's very, it's very saddening that our DMV got destroyed for no reason. Um, I, I believe there's different avenues that you can do, that you can go through, but, um, using something like this to, um, further your own personal gain is just crazy. And it takes away from people out there really protesting for the right thing. So, um, all I can say to our residents right now is please, please be safe and don't loot anybody. And please, uh, adhere to the mask order as well as the curfew. And that is the end of my comments. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Graham. Do we have any other boards with comments?
Mr. Mayor, this is Trustee Hardy.
Thank you, Trustee Hardy.
I have no Commission reports. I just have some comments. Um, I am haunted, um, by the voice of George Floyd, um, several times, sometimes during the day, hearing him say, "I can't breathe." It is literally haunting. I wake up, I hear it. Go to bed, I hear it. And, um, I'm hoping that, um, you know, this, this cry that has been heard out, um, this, this voice has been heard, um, throughout the world. It's, it's been heard in Berlin, it's been heard in Copenhagen, it's been heard in London, it's, it's been heard in Jerusalem. All these places are protesting. Um, and I just, they, they don't even live here, and they're protesting. And I'm, I'm hoping and I'm praying for change, um, because this year has been more than a notion. It is, you know, just fought so many different things this year, and I think this just encapsulates all the things that we really need to take a look at. Um, it's, it's, you know, it's just, it's, it's so disappointing. I can't even barely put it into words. But, um, I'm hoping that through this whole pandemic and through the unfortunate, um, death of George Floyd, that we can bring about some real change at a leadership level, because leadership, this country really needs to look at what has happened and, and propose some changes. Um, I want to thank our Police Department, uh, because they, um, from, I've lived here since 2001, um, and they have, in my opinion, always been fair and equitable. Um, and, um, you know, I've, I've never personally had any issues, and I think it's wonderful, um, that, you know, I can stand up and say that. Um, you know, we, we, we value our residents and, and the community, the surrounding communities. I don't think anyone driving through our community has a fear, you know, that something's going to happen to them. Um, whereas in some other communities, that may not be the case. And so I'm so proud to say that, and I want to thank our Police Department and our Fire Department for that. Um, and, and that again speaks to our leadership as well. So thank you, uh, Manager Mick. That, that means a lot. And thank you to our, uh, the, our boards, um, and previous board members as well. Um, just a tough time. And, um, I just hope that, you know, we can again see some change at the top. And, um, you know, I know that a lot of people are struggling with this right now. I want to say to our residents, if you're having some issues and you think you'd like to, um, get some counseling or something, um, I work for United Way. We have several organizations that are providing that counseling. Please visit our website or feel free to reach out to me personally, and I can connect you, because I have been getting requests, um, from, from, um, other community members that need counseling, um, because this has affected them so deeply. Um, and then with regards to the looting, I, I, I'm disappointed. Um, I'm not, um, happy about, you know, the fact that people would use this and dishonor George Floyd's memory in order to, um, have personal gain, gain. And I, and also, I don't understand why they would, um, you know, put the DMV on fire in Chicago Heights. It's something that I don't know if people understand the history of that, but we have, um, at one point asked for that, um, in, in prior times, because we didn't want to have to go to 95th Street. They just did upgrades. I don't know if you've been recently. They just did a whole renovation, and, and the lines were moving faster. They, it was just, you know, to make it so that residents out here, you know, uh, could get services, you know, so seniors wouldn't have to go far, things of that nature. So, um, you know, I just want, if anybody, you know, is, is, um, you know, that knows, if anybody knows somebody that, you know, is, is thinking about doing anything to looting or anything like that, just be mindful of the privileges that we have out here, uh, because everything that you do has a domino effect. And, and I'm hoping that, um, you know, the, um, DMV wasn't destroyed too badly, and it can, you know, fix it, because that is really, um, you know, that was a, or, it was really a great resource for, like, our seniors and our handicapped residents that, you know, can't make it far. Um, you know, I, I just feel like, you know, when you, you do things like that, you've just, you hurt other people in the community. Um, and so I, I hope that, you know, we other people can be more mindful, um, that we can, we can protest and we can struggle, you know, we can talk to people about these things without destroying, you know, the opportunities and the resources, um, and businesses that are here to help us. Um, that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Hardy. Trustee Heron? I believe you're still on mute, Trustee Heron.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Maybe I mean-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, no report, just comment. My condolences go out to, um, Floyd family. Um, it hurts. And I'm sorry if I get choked up, but it hurts. I'm for peaceful protest, but I want to encourage the residents to encourage our youth right now. I say this to my students at the dismissal of class. Go change the world. Don't hate the police. Become the police. Become a legislator. Get at the table. Don't loot because it hurts and these people look like me. I'm, I'm gonna keep it short. Um, but I would like to encourage everyone to stay safe, and that concludes my comments.
... but they actually speak about the importance of small business and how it's important to our community and the people who run those businesses. Um, I think you, I think the residents would find that interesting. It's a heartfelt message that speaks not only for his own business, but also for, uh, small businesses, uh, in this community and, and around the nation. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I apologize for speaking out of order.
Oh, that's all right, Trustee Woods. Thank you. Uh, do we have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda for the public's sake? This is the approval of the minutes of the special rules meeting of May 18th and the regular meeting of May 18th, 2020, and the appointment of Jennifer Winston, 333 Farragut Street, to the Beautification Awards Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2022. Is there a motion from the board?
Trustee Woods, I move.
Thank you, Trustee Woods. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Thank you, Trustee Hardy. Village Clerk, roll call please.
Trustee Graham? Hardy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Heron?
Aye.
Settle?
Aye.
Woods?
Aye.
Mayor Vanderbilt?
Aye. Uh, we also did skip over citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. I just want to remind the public that there were no, uh, comments from the public, but due to COVID-19, the board meeting has and will be held via conference call. Public comment can be sent prior to the phone conference board meeting via email to teamic@vopf.com. comment can be sent prior to the phone conference board meeting via email to teamic@vopf.com by three P M. the day of the meeting, and public comments will be read during the meeting. A record of all action, if any taken during the board meeting, will be made available upon the request. Second item we have is on the debatable agenda, and that's an ordinance adopting the budget for all corporate purposes of the Village of Park Forest, Cookinwell Counties, in lieu of the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of July two thousand twenty and ending on the thirtieth day of June two twenty twenty-one. This is the first reading, and will be up for, uh, second reading in our next meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Trustee Settles, Mr. Mayor, I'm motion special regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held remotely June first be adjourned.
Thank you, trustee Settles. Do we have a second?